Notice to the public, if individual, your individual address, the council should be respectful and the charge of words and actions, honors of property being considered this evening will be allowed to address the council at the time that condemnation hearing is called. When the address is called, please come to the podium and state your name and your address and we will start the meeting and I'm out three minutes.
C, 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 C.
He just referred to you as.
Again, notice to the public, individuals addressing the council should be respectful of others and the charge of words and actions, owners of the properties being considered this evening will be allowed to address the council at that time. The condemnation hearing is called. When the address is called, please come to the podium and state your name and your address. We also would like to have all cell phones and electronic devices used for communication to be silenced for the duration of the meeting. I will now call Turbo Parish's outdated government condemnation hearings to order today, Tuesday, October 28, 2025. I would give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, as we rest today, oh God, with the heart that blood, that pumps the blood within our bodies, oh God, and the fresh air that we breathe today. We look at that as life, oh God, that life that you've given us. Again, oh God, one man's trash is another man's treasure. As we use our wisdom, knowledge and understanding here today, we ask ourselves to be fair, very objective in the proceedings of this meeting, oh God. We will ask for you to bless Turbo Parish and its citizens in your darling son, Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Alicia, could you give us a roll call, please?
Ms. Chauvin, Mr. Trustclaire, Mr. Pleasure, Mr. Harding, Mr. Boisin, Mr. Amity, Mr. Champagne, Mr. Hamner, Mr. Babin, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum present.
Thank you, ma'am. We are now conducting the public hearings and take action on both combinations of structures located at the following address. First address is 7311 Shrimpers Row, Dulack, Louisiana.
This matter was continued from the April 29, 2025 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on October 21, 2025 indicated that this structure continues to be in a dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to repair, demolish or remove the structure by January 28, 2026.
Anyone here to represent the prop? Mr. Babin?
We, we continued this from the last one. Do we have the, I see the name on here, I just thought it was somebody else, is that? I mean, they're doing some work on this property, because we're giving them, we're in October right now, so we're giving them three months, okay? I, I'll go along with the recommendation to condemn and give them three months, alright?
Motion by Mr. Babin, second by Ms. Chauvin, to go along with the recommendation of administration to condemn and for 90 days. Any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion passed, nine zero. 216 Prescott Hill Drive, Homer, Louisiana.
This matter was continued from the July 29, 2025 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on October 21, 2025 indicated that this structure is still in a dilapidated and dangerous condition. It is our recommendation that this residential and accessory structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November 28, 2025.
Motion concur with administration.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, to concur with administration. Any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion passed, seven zero. My numbers are off. 212 Knockin Street, Homer, Louisiana.
This matter was continued from the July 29, 2025 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on October 20, 2025 indicated that this structure is still in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November 28, 2025.
State your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Latoya Keller. My address is 1515 Karan Street, and that's in Homer.
And your position with the property?
Okay, so basically, I, I know that they went and do observation on the property, but the, the foundation of the property is still solid. I went and, I have my own pictures as well. I went, I went to the property, I end up, the, the, let me see. They were saying that the roof, the roof was messed up and it was red infested possibly or whatever. I didn't see any of that. Now, I do know that there is some mildew on, in one room, which could be fixed. As far as the ceiling is just water, it was some water damage. But like, if you look at it, the windows are still intact, because on the nuisance complaint, they said something about the windows. There was only one window that was broken, which we boarded it up. As far as the roof, we put the necessary stuff to make sure that there is no more water damage, like. But I do have the pictures to show. I can say it, but I see they have pictures, but I also have pictures as well.
Ms. Kamel, could you read the violations for me?
So for this structure, we would be speaking of roof damage. There is some inside interior damage. And then there is some exterior damage, but that was prior to all of the grass being cut and the door open on the structure.
Okay. They have missing the spirit in reference to who owns the property. Are you legally the owner now?
Well, I'm not legally the owner. Like, basically, it was purchased through a tax sale. And they were telling me that I should go ahead on and just take my losses, I guess, pretty much, but I don't see where it makes any sense. You know what I'm saying? Like, if I, if that was an initial investment, I don't see just doing away with it for the minor damage that it does have. You know, if you look at the property, like, the biggest issue with the property was the grass, right? Once we, once we cut the grass down and everything else, we were able to see that the window was broken. We were able to see, like, little things that was done with the roof. But we covered the roof. We, as far as the, the window, the window was rep, not repaired, but we put the, we did the, we boarded up the, the window that was broken. So as far as the red infested, possibly, like, maybe, that's what they put in the report, maybe red infested, that is not true.
Well, I'm going to say this from the chair and Mr. Pleasure is going to help me out with this particular situation. Nuisance abatement, we do nuisance abatement, it's different between tall grass and nuisance abatement, which is the structure itself. But when you actually have debris that is included, the possibility and the likelihood of rodents or whatever is the most likely case that's there. So, under the circumstances that you're actually in, I know it's a roll of the dice, but I think Mr. Pleasure is trying to, going to try to help us out with this situation with a motion, please.
Okay, first, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. In lieu of advising based on Mr. Harding's suggestion, you said you purchased this at a tax sale, correct? Did we ever make, you know, any sense of, and this is for legal, I guess, the, the, I guess, the guidelines when it comes to purchasing at a tax sale? I understand it's still the, it's still owned by the original owners.
Correct.
Until the three years have lapsed.
Correct. So Derek versus Jay was my office, is preparing some research right now on that to dig in a little bit deeper, but as far as we're concerned for a condemnation hearing, notices have been sent to all proper parties. Do you have a specific question about her making the years?
Well, is she able to do anything to the property? That's, that's a legal thing, because if.
That's a civil matter for her to, to discuss with someone if she wants to make sure that she gets the most out of her investment, recoup it later, that kind of thing, shield herself in the event that the owner were to come back. That's a civil matter to discuss, probably with a title attorney for her.
Okay.
At the parish for condemnation purposes is.
Right.
We're good on this one.
Okay. And another question, you, you mentioned that they said, just take your loss. Who's they?
Well, actually, I called nuisance and abatement, and I also talked to Courtney Alcock. And basically, in so many words, they were saying that they didn't recommend me putting any money into the property, because I could possibly lose it if they come back and retrieve the property. And I'm willing to take that loss. I mean, I can't just see a property like that just going to waste. You know, there, there are so many people that's without housing for us to allow that to happen.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Ms. Chauvin?
Ms. Chauvin?
Okay. So my question, Ms. Keller, would be, what would be your timeline of cleaning up around the space? And the, so you can't go inside the house, correct?
Well, last meeting, they were supposed to, they took my number down to contact me to let me know when, like, what were my responsibilities or what I could do and what I couldn't do, but I never received that call. So basically, when we went, we went, I knew I could clean up around there. So the tall grass and everything, we knocked all that down. But in the midst of us knocking everything down, there was a, the door was open. So I was able to go in the property and just look at, look around or whatever. That's how I seen the water damage, the little water damage that they had.
So in looking, in looking at the picture right here. Are you planning on going clean up more?
Yes.
Are you planning on?
Yes, but I have.
But what's your timeline? What would be your timeline?
We started cleaning up more around the property. That's prob, that probably was taken before, but I, I have the pictures of some of the stuff that we started doing already.
Do you have a picture?
It's on a thumb drive. I have some that I printed out as well.
We don't have the capacity right now.
Okay, I have it on a thumb.
Mr. Pleasure?
Okay, based on Mr. Harding's recommendation, we'll give 90 days to, I guess, 90 days to extend?
They're going to continue?
Oh, you can give me whatever.
With 90 days?
Condemn with 90 days.
Okay, condemn with 90 days.
How are we condemning? I don't understand.
I would suggest you take that out with the councilman.
Okay.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Pleasure, that we condemn.
That is.
Subject to the 90 days. Second by Mr. Boisin.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Okay, so is it going to be back on a?
Members, members of your machine.
But I have, I have one more thing before we, before we leave.
Let me say this, though.
Okay.
All right. First of all, the extension is 90 days. Now, if you making progress with the property, right? Let's say, for instance, like the debris, I know you have to get a dumpster and stuff like that. You yourself said that you are rolling the dice. The recommendations, whether you follow the recommendations or you don't follow the recommendations, and we can discuss this later on, is the fact that we're all giving you some time. So we, we can't, I think legal can actually attest to this, is the fact that whatever money that you've actually put in there, if the original owners come back to retrieve the property, your investment actually goes back to you. Am I correct?
I, I really can't give her legal advice on this matter.
Okay, yeah, well, that's, that's, that would be my understanding for you to retrieve your property. But then we extend you 90 days and then whatever you deem necessary for you to do. And we can discuss this later on at a different, in a different.
Okay, so if the list that y'all gave me, that y'all told me that the issues that they had with the property, if those were addressed or whatever, where do we go from there? Is there something more that I should be doing or, you know, like, the list that y'all saying, the reason for y'all condemning a property is, am I supposed to do what's on the list? Or is there something in mind?
Ma'am, the understanding here, your help is, is extension of the 90 days in our conversation after we actually go further than that. Legal has already advised that you should actually know the law and understand the law, the position that you're in. And when you, yourself saying that you took the risk, that is the risk.
Understood. I'm not worrying, I'm not talking about the money side. I'm asking about the list of, the list of things that they, they put on the nuisance letter that I received. If those are addressed, what more do y'all need me to do if most of the things on the list is addressed?
All right, Ms. Kamel.
So if she covers the things that is on the list, then that will eliminate the problem? It will take care of the issue?
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
That's why I asked her to read what the violations were.
You didn't ask me to read what the violations were?
No, I asked her to.
Yeah, so typically what happens, contact your councilman, tell him that all the things are done, and you would like to bring it back to council to either give you more time, no? Or were you going to just take it off if it's fixed?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank y'all so much.
Votes, seven zero. Next item, 4657 Highway 56, Chauvin.
An inspection conducted on October 6, 2025 indicated that this structure has been demolished. It is our recommendation to close this file.
Moved by Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Hamner. Any discussion, members of your machine? Motion passed, eight zero. 1503 Division Avenue.
This matter, this matter was continued from the July 29, 2025 condemnation hearing. On October 20th, an inspection was conducted and it indicated that this structure is still in a dilapidated and dangerous condition. It is our recommendation that this residential structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish and or remove the structure by November 28, 2025.
State your name and address, please.
Hope Gregoire, 106 Hattie Street, Homer, Louisiana. I'm here on behalf of Matthew Gregoire, Aurora Gregoire passed away. And Lauren is in a nursing home, and there's people in there that don't belong there. Yeah, there, I, when we, when me and Matt went to go to see if we can get stuff and try to do things, the dogs are barking. But he wants to know if there's an extension and he also has somebody that will tear it down.
Okay. How long would they, how long would it take for them to tear it down?
The person he got is supposed to be going, give him an estimate of how much it's going to cost to tear it down. And Matt works, he's a traveling, he works traveling from state to state, so he won't be until November 27. But he does, he does want to try to pay for it himself.
Okay. We don't want to bring it back to condemnation, so we could go with the recommendation, but give the 30 days to do that, right?
If, yeah, it's already 30 days. The November 28 date would be the 30 days from today.
Okay. All right. So when did you guys find out about this? Or when did you find out about it, or whomever?
It went to the address 7273 Grand Cali Road in Dulack, the certified letter. I went and picked it up and I sent Matt a picture of it, and that was about, I'd say, two weeks ago.
Okay, all right. And you say someone's in the house, lives in there?
There's dogs in the house and there's people, like, from across the street, as far as I know, last time we went.
Okay, all right. Well, what I'm going to do is, I mean, I'm going to share my contact information with you guys.
Okay.
All right, and well, I'm going to go with the recommendation from administration, but I need you guys to just be in contact with me in the meantime as well, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks. My motion is to go with the recommendation as administration.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, that we concur with administration. Any discussion, members of your machine? Motion passed, eight zero. 1170 Barrow Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on July 9, 2024. An inspection was conducted on July 25, 2024, which indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October 20, 2025 indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November 28, 2025.
State your name and address, sir.
Good afternoon, Damon Baldon, I'm the manager of Damon J. Baldon LLC, 162 New Orleans Boulevard at Homer, Louisiana. This is one of the properties, we're still in litigation. We do have, at the end of November, we have a status conference with the judge to pick a trial date, to get insurance proceeds, and this is one of the properties where you're getting insurance proceeds. We've, we've been in front of this council several times for different properties and we, we taking care of every property one by one. This should be the last one, hopefully. And, you know, so I'd like to request 90 days to, to try to address this property. We won't know how to have a trial by that time, but hopefully by that time, we can still do the best we can to repair it prior to trial.
Okay, when's the next, whatever you have, something that's going on?
Status conference at the end of November, November 25.
What's the next, when is it due to, what's your recommendation, I'm sorry?
Order to demol, condemn, but remove by November 28, 2025.
Okay, so that time's pretty close. So I'll tell you what, what we'll do, I will go with the recommendation of administration and just kind of keep me posted in the interim and then we can see what we can come up with.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, to concur with administration. Any discussion, members of your machine? Motion passed, eight zero.
Thank you.
1302 Dastre Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on September 8, 2024. An inspection conducted on September 9, 2024 indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October 20, 2025 indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November 28, 2025.
State your name and address, please.
My address is 1314 Dastre Street. My name is Loretta Jones. The property right there was for my son. He's deceased. I took it up and stopped paying the tax on it. I did have somebody, I paid somebody to take it down. They took half of it down, but they stopped. So, you know, I asked y'all, could y'all give me 90 days until I could find somebody else to, you know, continue taking it down, so I can, you know, clean, clean it up.
Mr. Pleasure?
Okay, you said that you had initially paid someone to do it?
Yeah, I paid half of the money and they, they stopped.
Sure.
You know? They had took, they took half of it down, but they stopped.
And, that's okay, I got it here. Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll keep it condemned, okay? Yeah, and we'll give you, we'll give you 90 days to, that's so it doesn't come back, correct, Ms. Brown?
Correct.
All right, we'll condemn and we'll give you 90 days to do that.
Yeah, I have it down.
What I would like for you to do, though, as you progress through this, as you make contact with contractors, whomever to tear it down, please stay in contact with me as well, so I'm aware. And then if we need to make other provisions down the road, then we can. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
We also need to remind these people who will be doing demolitions or renovations on these structures that they should obtain a permit for those things.
Thank you, ma'am. That's, I tell you what, just give me a call, once you find the contractor, a viable contractor this time, I hope. And then I can kind of walk you through what you need to do to make sure you're legal while you're tearing the structure down.
Okay, I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Y'all be blessed up there.
You too, ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, to condemn the project subject to 90 days. Any discussion, members of your machine? Motion passed, eight zero. 217 Gene Ellen Avenue, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on May 23, 2023. An inspection conducted on May 23, 2023 indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October 20, 2025 indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November 28, 2025.
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed ad hoc attorney to search for the owners of. Courtney Alcock, I was appointed ad hoc attorney, um, to, uh, search for the owners of, uh, this address. Uh, carried out all the customary, uh, methods, but I've had no contact with anyone.
Thank you, um, so I make a motion to concur with administration.
Motion by, uh, Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Hamner, uh, to concur with administration, any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero. One oh five Abbott Street, Dulack, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on July twentieth, twenty twenty three. An inspection conducted on July twenty first, twenty twenty three, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Mr. Babin.
Motion to concur with administration. Go ahead, Courtney, I'm sorry.
Uh, Courtney Alcock, I was appointed, uh, ad hoc on this property and, uh, undertook the, uh, customary, uh, notification, uh, avenues. I was contacted by a couple of different people, um, that, um, thought that the, the Ave Street address was the home of, um, an individual who may be missing. Um, it was shrimper that, um, possibly fell off his shrimp boat in the last couple of weeks. Uh, so anyway, they, uh, they said he hadn't been living there and, um, that's the only information I had.
My, my motion is the same.
Uh, motion by Mr. Babin, second by Mr. Hamner, we concur with administration, any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass seven zero. Uh, four thirty, Field Crest, uh, Drive, Tepito, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on October thirtieth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on November eighth, twenty twenty four, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Hi, uh, Courtney Alcock, I was appointed curator ad hoc on this property. Again, I undertook the customary, uh, notification avenues and I've had no contact with anyone.
A motion by Mr. Amadi, second by Ms. Chauvin, that we concur with, uh, administration, any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero, seven seventy eleven, uh, Highway fifty six, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on July eighteenth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on October first, twenty twenty four, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty second, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential structure foundation, carport and debris be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Uh, Courtney Alcock, I was appointed curator ad hoc for this property. I undertook the customary notification procedures and I've had no contact with an owner.
Um, moved to concur with administration.
Uh, motion by Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Amadi, that we concur with administration, uh, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero, fifty six thirty nine, Byerside Drive, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on March first, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on March fourth, twenty twenty four, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty second, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed curator ad hoc on this property. Uh, I undertook the customary notification procedures, but I've had no contact with the owner.
Motion to concur with administration.
Second. Uh, motion by, uh, Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Hamner, to concur with administration, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero, two zero two Chauvin Street, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on May thirty first, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on June tenth, twenty twenty four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed curator ad hoc, uh, I undertook the customary notification procedures and I've had no contact with anyone.
Motion to concur with administration.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Hamner, concur with administration, any discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero, one forty, uh, one forty two Marjory Street, Dulack, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on December twenty seven, twenty twenty four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Babin, second by Ms. Chauvin, any, any discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero, one on one Charlotte Street, uh, Gray, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on July thirtieth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on August eighth, twenty twenty four, indicated that this structure was in a, that these structures was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty second, twenty twenty five, indicated that these structures continue to be in violation. It is our recommendation that, uh, these structures be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
State your name and address, sir?
Good evening, my name is Paris Fallow, my address is eleven oh seven South Peters, New Orleans. Um, I work for the property management company. Um, we have a bid to demolish and plan to demolish. The funds are tied to USDA, we are technically supposed to wait and request it through, through USDA and the government's closed right now. If we could get that in writing or something, that would be helpful, we can use the funds still and demolish the building and just show them we needed to do it, um, but that's, that's the plan.
Mr. Pleasure?
Excuse me, Ms. Harding?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on behalf of Mr. Carl Harding, our chair, um, you said you need something in writing for?
Just the date, like if you, just that?
Oh, okay, well, motion to concur with administration, that's pretty easy then, so, yeah, they can, they'll provide that for you, easy.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, uh, uh, to concur with administration, any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero.
Is there someone I could get, like, contact from?
Not, not tonight, it's in the minutes, though, you know what I mean, uh, yeah. Yeah, uh, mi- excuse me, sir. Five oh three Hazel Barkin Street, Houma, Louisiana.
An inspection conducted on October seventh, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure has been demolished, we recommend this file be closed.
Uh, actually, uh, Mr. Hamner made the motion, second by Mr. Pleasure, uh, you want to discuss it, sir? No, we made a motion, you want to say something?
Oh.
Oh, okay, uh, motion by Mr. Hamner, second by Mr., um, Pleasure, to concur with administration, members of your machine?
What motion did y'all make?
To close it.
To close.
It's closed. Yeah.
Members of your machine? We did, it was eight zero, okay. Fifty six twenty six West Main, Houma, Louisiana. Fifty four twenty six West Main, Louisiana, uh, West Main Street, Houma, Louisiana.
An inspection conducted on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, indicated that the residential and accessory structure had been demolished. It's our recommendation that this file be closed.
Motion, uh, by Mr. Amadi, second by, uh, Ms. Chauvin, to concur with administration, any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass seven zero. Twelve oh nine Waller Street, Houma, Louisiana.
Um, this matter will have to be continued, um, to our January, um, twenty seventh, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. Um, because the succession was just opened on ten twenty eight, twenty five.
Uh, you have something to say, ma'am?
Uh, Kaylee Rhodes, um, one eighteen Howard Avenue. So I had bought the house, uh, October sixteen, twenty twenty five, and I didn't know anything about this. Yeah.
Okay, uh, legal?
There is, as of today, no record of your purchase of the house, um, in the public record, however, are you appearing today, um, acknowledging that you have noticed of this hearing?
Oh, yeah.
To speak on the property?
Mm-hmm, I'm the owner.
Are you the sole owner?
Yeah. No.
I think we need to continue, we need to notice.
Okay, I make a motion that we concur with administration.
Uh, motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, that, uh, we concur with administration, any more discussion, members of your machine?
Alright, so what, what we did just now, ma'am, was, um, we continued it until the next condemnation hearing. Now, in the meantime, I'd suggest that, um, our legal department doesn't have any record of your purchase of the, of the, um, the property, right? So with that being said, whatever documentation that you might have of purchasing the property, please share, it appears that legal's writing some contact information down for you. Please give them a call, so we can kinda figure this out for the next condemnation hearing.
Okay, cause I have the papers here.
Oh, well, there you go, bring them to her. Alright, we can move forward, I guess. Sure, well, we made, but we.
Did we register the vote? Yeah, both registered.
Press your button again, there you go.
I'm gonna have to, like, check through this with the chain of title, because it's, it's not looking to me like it was acquired from the purcha- the person that we have as the current owner. So, which we'll just, yeah, I'm gonna take, give you my email and, um, send me a copy of this, or can I have this? Okay, send me, yeah, send me a copy of that and then we'll, we'll check it against the abstract carefully. But I advise that we continue it.
The motion has passed eight zero. Uh, one fifty one Millennium Avenue, Houma, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty second, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, uh, Renal Carrer, uh, twenty two twenty nine Bay Blue. Uh, my wife's here with me also. Uh, I bought this property from a friend about five to seven years ago. And his son, uh, since then, he's passed away. Uh, I own seventy five percent, one of the sons owns twenty five percent. I can't get him to agree or wanna do anything. I tried to repair the place when I first got it, but then I gave up on it because I couldn't get any permits or do anything with it because he, he's, he's fighting me about it. And, uh, he doesn't wanna sell, he doesn't wanna do anything, he won't even talk to me, so I can't even get a permit to demolish it, which I would like to do that, but, uh, I can't get him to agree or even talk to him or he, I, I don't even know how to get a hold of him. Uh, he's, uh, avoiding me and, and, uh, so I don't know what to do about it. So maybe y'all can help me out and give me some, uh, clarity on what to do about it.
Um, I guess, like, it, that becomes a silver matter and, and is there any validity that you can't get a, um?
I think I'm unclear, so you acquired the property seven, what's, what's your name again, sir, I'm sorry?
Uh, Renal Carrer. I purchased it about five to seven years ago.
Okay. What's, what's the issue with?
Well, I would like to demolish it, I was gonna repair it, but then I couldn't get a good him to go along with it. And, uh, he moved into it after and lived there a couple, two or three months without, without electricity, just water. He turned the water meter off in my name and put it in his name. And so s- since then, the water's been off, everything's been off, and I can't get him in agreement. I can't even talk to him, he won't even talk to me. So, I don't know, and he is on here, he's on the paper to be here, but he's not here.
So you were saying that you, you were unable to get a demolition permit because he's on there?
Yes, sir.
Is that sound accurate, no?
Well, the permit office told me that I can't get a permit without, without all the owners signing to agree to get the permit.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you my card, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, follow the, um, uh, the recommendations of the, the, uh, administration. And then they're gonna condemn it, and then we're gonna give you time to, uh, you know, work out the, 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 uh, demolition permit and see what we can do there, and then you can tear it down, okay?
Okay.
But if, if you don't get it down in, what's, what's the date you put, um?
November twenty.
November twenty eighth? There's, there's. How, how long would you take?
Well, um, probably, 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 probably ninety days, I guess, you can give me.
So we'll condemn and give you ninety days to, to work it out.
Okay, so.
So all you have to do is contact me, we're gonna work through the, making sure you get the permit.
So you think I can get a permit to demolish without?
We're gonna work through that, we're gonna keep in contact and we're gonna, I'm gonna see what we can do.
Okay, okay.
You can come and get this, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Chauvin, champagne, Ms., Mrs. Champagne, second by Ms. Chauvin, that we, uh, condemn subject to the ninety days. Any more discussion, members of your machine? Motion pass eight zero. Forty eight oh eight, Knobby Black Drive, Gibson, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, like to, uh, continue this property on behalf of Mr. Harding, uh, to the next condemnation meeting.
Second.
Motion to, uh, uh, condemn until the next condemnation, ninety days. Continuing, continuing. To the January twenty, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Any more discussion, members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. One eighty-five Petrie Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on July tenth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that the structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
State your name and address, sir.
My name's Jesse Gidring, one eight seven Petrie Street. Well, the house was actually, wasn't that bad before the hurricane really kicked it in, you know? And it was actually a storage for storing stuff in it, but when I first got it, cuz I got it from a taxi or two when I first bought it. And, uh, but, like I said, it ha- it has to be tear down. So I'm just gonna get a little more time so I can get to, to, can tear it down, you know? But I, I'm gonna take it to the ground. So we just had to get everything out of it. There were, you know, stuff that they had and now since we finished, you can see with, some of the stuff had just fallen apart, so. I just gotta get the time for to do that and, and they got another one on here that's mine, so I gotta wait for that one, but I'm gonna, that's it. I just need that time.
Mr. Pleasure?
Okay, on behalf of Mr., uh, Mr. Toshclaire in his absence, um, wants to continue this until the next, uh, condemnation hearing.
Yes.
A motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Mr., uh, Wazan, that we continue until the next condemnation hearing, January, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. Members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. One sixteen Spencer Road, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The inspection was conducted on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, which indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Name and address, sir.
Yeah, Lester Sneeze Junior, one twenty-two Spencer Road. Yeah, we, we already started the process, uh, you can see taking the house down. I had to, the house is not mine. We live on a family estate and I had to get permission from the owner. She owns the house. Her daughter was living in it up until about three years ago. Then the house went vacant. And, uh, I got her permission to get rid of it, so we started the process. The lady came, the inspector came down last week. And she said we had to stop, we had to get a permit before we tear it down. And I got the power disconnected. Said we gotta give it to gas company, gotta get a permit to, I mean, give it to gas company so they can take down the meter. So it can come down safely. The owner do not have the funds to pay somebody to take that house down. So we, as the family members that live on Spencer, will have to take it down. It's coming down. It's gonna be a slow process cuz we gotta take it down safely. We don't have machines and we don't have the, the funding to pay somebody to do it. So we already started it. It's coming down.
Alright.
Just need time to do it.
Okay, just make sure, and I'll just reiterate what you're already aware. Um, just make sure we getting the necessary permits to do whatever you gotta do, okay? Um, I'll give you my contact information. Keep me posted in the interim while you're doing that. But I'm gonna go with the recommendation of administration since you guys are tearing it down.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure?
And you can get a card from this lady on the end.
Okay, Mr. Babbin?
Yeah, I just, I, I wonder, sir, you, you, you said something, you don't necessarily have to go back up there. You said something that I want everybody to understand. You need to get a permit so it can be done safely. That's the, that's why we ask people to have to get the permits. It's because if you'd have started tearing that down with a, a active gas line or elec- active electricity, somebody could've got hurt. So that's why everybody thinks we just wanna get permits and permits. There's a reason for it, and you said it, and I thank you for that.
Uh, uh, motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin. Uh, any more discussion, members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. Three seventeen East Woodlawn Ranch Road.
The initial complaint was received on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And in the initial inspection conducted on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, Courtney Alcock, I was appointed, uh, curator ad hoc on this property and I undertook the customary notification, um, avenues, but I've had no contact with an owner.
Motion to concur with administration.
Mo- motion by Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Wazan. Any discussion, members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight z- zero. One seventy-six Crochetville Road, Montague, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on December twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed curator ad hoc for this property and undertook the customary notification procedures and have had no contact with an owner.
On behalf of Mrs., um, Steve Toshclaire, we concur with the administration.
Uh, motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms., uh, Chauvin, that we concur with administration. Any more discussion, members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero, one twenty-two Samuel Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty-first indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and debris removed from, uh, from the property by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, my name's Rosie Sneeze and, uh, I live at thirteen oh nine Memory Lane. I'm here representing my son, Jamal Jones. Um, he's had the house demolished. But we stopped the work because, uh, when I went for an extension on the permit, they said I had to wait until after this meeting. So all we have left is to remove all of the debris that's still there. And that's the process we're at right now.
Yeah, um. Okay, I did, uh, I did speak with, um, I think Jesse about this when he called. And I told him just stop what he was doing until we can, um, got, get the dumpster. And I seen you guys were able to get a dumpster and all that to remove it. I know the intent is there and he assured that, um, that it would be, uh, it would be done. So I'd like to just remove it from the list all, all in all because it, the dumpster's there. They have a, close, we can close the file. There's another dumpster that's coming tomorrow, so we'll be good there for sure to put that in there. So we'll close, make a motion to close the file. Thanks, thanks, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, to, uh, close the condemnation file. Uh, any more discussion? Members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. One thirty-seven Petrie Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The inspection conducted on July tenth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential accessory structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Name and address, sir.
Jesse Gidring, one eight seven Petrie Street. I'm gonna repair. That's what I wanna do, I'll repair. Just get a little time so I can, just put the back wall back and a few knick-knack on the, on the roof. I just, I just, well, I'm storing it at right now, what I gotta put from the front, from the one in the back. So I just need the time to do that.
Okay, on behalf of the, your counsel, Mr. Steve Toshclaire, we'll just continue this one till the next, uh, condemnation hearing. Okay.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure. Second, second by Ms. Chauvin, to con- uh, continue to the next condemnation hearing, uh, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. Any more discussion, members of the voting machine? Eight zero. Motion passed. Uh, five twenty-nine Marmot Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. The initial inspection con- uh, conducted on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to remove or demolish the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Name and address, sir.
Travis Lee Wright, three fourteen Mall Street. Uh, I'm in, I'm a condemn, I mean, I was planning on, I was gonna fix it, but then it's just, it was too far going. But, I mean, I just haven't had the time. Nobody was messing. I have other properties. And, uh, I mean, I'm gonna take it down. I don't feel that, uh, that I should be the parish to go tear it down and, uh, charge me for it or take my property.
So, so, um, so if you're intending to take it down, we're gonna concur with administration and I'll give you how many, how much time you need to tear down? Ninety days is enough?
Uh, do I could check back with y'all in ninety days? You know, I mean, um, the only reason these ninety days because here we coming up on the next two months that, uh,
So, so what we do is give you ninety days and if you get some of the work done and you keep in touch with us and it's significantly done and you may need a little more time, then we'll give you a little more time. But we, we wanna see some progress that.
I had, uh, one in a, I was with permit, I filed in for a permit and everything for the demo. To get the demo and everything started, so.
Alright, so we're gonna concur, give you ninety days, get your time to get the permit, and then we'll go from there.
Alright.
Uh, motion by Mr. Champagne, second by Ms. Chauvin, uh, to condemn the property subject to the ninety days. Um, any more discussion, members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. Eight oh four Oregon Road, Montague, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. The initial inspection was conducted on June sixth, twenty twenty-four, which indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential mobile home be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to concur with administration?
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, that we concur in administration. Members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. Forty-seven sixty highway fifty-six, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on November first, twenty twenty-four. The initial inspection was conducted on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, which indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, state your name and address, sir.
Daniel Delmane, three eighty-eight Port Rowway.
And what's your intention?
Okay, so, um, long, I'm trying to make it short and sweet. Um, I just finished complying. There was a forty by forty building filled to the brim with stuff. It wasn't even, half of it wasn't even mine. It was one of my uncle's. I completely got that building demolished on my weekends off. I hauled everything out of there. They had downed trees, tall grass, everything's been cleaned up. So now I'm intending on starting on the house. My intention right now is get everything out of the house, gut it. If it's salvageable, I'll salvage it. If not, I will file for a permit for demolition. I just need time. I do this on my weekends off. Um, it's a one-man band.
How much, how much time are you thinking that you're needing?
I'm thinking it'd take me just to gut it and all that. Four months to get everything out and do that.
Four months?
I mean, I could show.
How, how long has it been there?
The house?
Camilla, how long has it been?
Uh, just getting started on the house.
We received the complaint November first, twenty twenty-four, so.
And I completed the shop and settled with Mr. Barry Weiss on eight twenty twenty-five on the rest of the property. And like I said, my intentions were to start on the house.
Mr. Barry Weiss, so it went to court?
The, the, the shop and the nuisance, they go to court. Now, I got all that done, all on my own.
Tell you what, this is what I'm gonna do. Let's do, uh, condemn and we'll do ninety days. Keep in touch with me. And then we'll go from there. If I see that you need more time, it has to be substantial progress made throughout that time. Um, and, and we'll go with that. So I make a motion to condemn and give ninety days.
So why are we condemning it if I'm looking at possibly?
Because I'm not gonna start over if you don't come through with what you're supposed to do. That's fair enough. Ms. Camilla and Ms. Dionne in their, their department works really hard at getting this done. And I don't wanna have to start over if you do not comply with what you're saying that you're going to do.
Contact you directly?
Yep, and I, I'm gonna get with you to give my, my information.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, then, motion, uh, motion by, uh, Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Hamlin, that we, uh, uh, condemn the property, uh, uh, subject to the ninety days. Members of the voting machine? Motion passed eight zero. Forty-eight sixty-seven Bay Side Drive, Chauvin, Louisiana.
An inspection conducted on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this residential accessory structure has been demolished. It's our recommendation that this file be closed.
Uh, motion by Mr. Amadi, second by Mr., uh, Babbin, uh, that we concur with administration. Uh, any discussion, members of the voting machine? Motion passed, seven zero. Forty-seven twenty-one Highway fifty-six, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. An inspection conducted on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five.
State your name and address, please, ma'am.
Um, my name is Wendy Dupre and the address is forty-seven twenty-three Highway fifty-six. Uh, I'm here for my mom, for Kathy, uh, Boudreaux.
Ms. Chauvin?
Okay, and your intention?
Um, okay, she tried for help and she's disabled. She lives like next door in the little house. And she just worried to lose the property and I don't know what else. She said she tried to do whatever it was and they were out of fundings and stuff cuz she didn't have the money to demolish it.
Okay.
She, I don't know if there's any type of help or do I get an extension and we try to see what's.
Um, I'm not sure if there's gonna be any, do we have any funds left? I'm, I'm not really sure on. Do we have any funds left, I'm, I'm not really sure on that part, I, I know that it can't stay this way.
Right, no, it needs to go, I mean, we would all love to see it gone, it's just the money wise for her.
Right, um. Yeah, I, I don't know that there's any money down the pipeline that will come for this, uh. But I know that we definitely need to condemn and, and, and kinda move forward with it to be condemned, um, it would be. Um. That in doing so, that the parish would, would take it on, but then it would be like, I guess, the lean against the property on, on that.
Right, and she lives right next door, that's all she has is. I mean, she lost the trailer for the storm and then she had to put the money she got for the trailer into the house, so.
Are they, are they connected?
Yes, but I think they split the property, it's like forty seven twenty three, I don't know how they did it with the property, but it's like kinda too little.
Is it? Camilla, is it?
It's, it's one piece of property with both structures on it.
Oh, so it's showing one solid, I thought it was split.
So, so my question would be, is there no way to, to, is there like family to get together to pull it down and? You know, get rid of it?
We wanted to burn it, but you know, we can't do that, because nobody has the money, I mean, we still rebuilding from. Right, so that's what's hard, like we helping her so much, I mean, we. If that's, I don't wanna see her lose anything or have to pay because she barely makes it, you know, as it is.
Okay.
I, I spoke, I spoke with her mom and, um, it, it is, it's a pretty bad situation that the mom is in. The mom is, um, disabled, um, I, I felt for her myself.
Okay. Let me do this, um. Let's do condemnation, but do a ninety day thing, so let me go and figure out if there's anything coming down, let me. Let me go do some checking.
Okay.
In, in that case, what I'm gonna do is, um, you have a phone number that you can give me that we can go back and forth.
Yeah, you wanna, um, keep in touch with me? Okay.
Do I just?
Motion by, uh, Ms. Chauvin. Second by, uh, Mr. Hamlet that, uh, we condemn, uh, the, the property. Subject to ninety day. To the ninety days, members vote your machine? Motion pass eight zero. One oh five Cyfran Drive, Terryo, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on August fifth, twenty twenty four. An initial inspection conducted on August fourteenth, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
State your name and address.
Yeah, uh, my name is, uh, Kenneth Lopacola, two five four nine one Winding Way Drive, Pass Christian. Mississippi. Um. Uh, since I got the notice around October fifteenth, I went down to check on the property, my neighbors were supposed to be cutting my grass. I left a tractor down there and a, and a mower for Kubota tractor. Um. Uh, so I brought another piece of equipment, cleaned up the property, trimmed the trees, uh, pushed a pile of trash near the. The, the trailer. Uh, came in and pulled the application for a demo permit. Uh, saw a man sign down near, uh, Do Lodge about our demo houses, uh, Mr. Brian Borg. Contacted him, we talked on the phone, I told him I was pulling an application, a demo permit. We agreed that he was gonna charge me four thousand dollars to remove our demo, the trailer. Two people had contacted me that they wanted it and were gonna move it. Uh, I pulled the, the application, wanna be totally honest, he went and started demoing it this weekend. So, here's a dumpster out there, this trailer was never hooked up to anything, it was always just parked on this property. We had it delivered, uh, about thirty days before Ida hit. So it was just sat on the property, ready to be turned into our fishing lodge. And then Ida hit, my boathouse got destroyed, my marsh camp got destroyed. And, um, everybody lost interest in building the lodge, so it never had any utilities, never was lived in. Uh, was a very nice unit when we had it, uh, brought down there. But that is the state that, uh, have an application, I told the contractor. That, uh, I probably wouldn't get a building, uh, demo permit till early this week. So, he did jump the gun and started demo and, uh, dumpsters down there. But I have not seen it.
Okay, I, your recommendation was condemn in thirty days?
Yes.
Yeah, since you've already started, get, get him that demo permit, I, it would be, it would be well advised for him. Not to do any work until you get that permit, okay, I would, I would tell him that, but I make a motion to condemn and give him thirty days to tear it down.
Uh, um, m- motion, uh, by Mr. Babbin, second by, uh, Ms. Chauvin to condemn and give him thirty days. Uh, any more discussion, members, vote your machine? Kelly?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank y'all.
Motion pass six zero. Uh. Six twenty five Piccon Street?
The initial complaint was received on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The initial inspection conducted on July third, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential and access, and accessory structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by Nov- by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Name and address?
Uh, Shane Snyder, six two six High Street?
Six two six High Street?
So what's your, uh, intent with the property?
To rebuild?
We actually have a permit now to where we can repair.
How long you think it's gonna take y'all, are you doing it yourself or y'all? How long's it been this way since, so this is since May twenty twenty four?
Just obtained the house in November of last year, we got it from, um, my grandmother's partner. So we didn't know the extent of the damage, because honestly, we didn't go look at it before. Um, until we actually got the notice in the mail. From the, the, um, I think it was the nuisance department, uh, what needed to be fixed on it.
What are the things that need to be fixed?
The roof, um.
The windows, the back wall.
Roof was the main thing.
Yeah, the roof was the main thing, but we, we've, we've tarp, like, it's got a tarp over it now. Um, it's not, it's no longer open to where it can be rained in or anything like that, and you boarded up all the windows, correct?
So what I would like to do is, um, uh, you, you have a permit to?
Yes, I have a copy of it too as well.
So, um, can we continue this to then give them, then to the next meeting? And if they have some substantial, um, or some of progress, and then we could take it from there? I make a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Motion by Mr. Champagne, second by Mr. Hamid. Uh, that we can, continue to the next condemnation hearing, uh, January twenty seven, twenty twenty six. Uh, members, vote your machine? Motion pass eight zero. Uh. Eighteen twenty four Himalaya Avenue, Tibeto, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on November fourth, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Mr. Hamid, se- uh, second by Ms. Chauvin to, uh, concur with administration? Any more discussion? Members, watch your, watch your machine? Motion pass seven zero. Uh, seventy four forty nine Main Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on May seventh, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on May ninth, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It's our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Name and address and your intent, please?
My name is Willette Bolden Melder, um, it's my grandmother's property, my mother, um, for. Twenty twenty one of August, my mother passed. And through my mother passing and on the property, it was where her tenants was renting for her. From, from my mother and she passed, they have a couple of months where they were living in squatters. I had where Ida came and I had to deal with my property, my mother's property. Dealing with family, dealing with lawyers that I, I paid to get services done. And when it was a point to annuities and royalties on my grandmother's property, that's when. Everything came out of hand, I went. I came to court for the acc-, I combined of the, um, renters. And the gentleman right there was the judge that sit in on the case, I have receipts where I came in that court. It was where I went, Mr. LaRosa, I, I don't know your name, I don't know your name, but you, you were on. It was October the twenty second. Where you were in, uh, sitting, I have a good memory because I had to go through the experience of all. The agony of, of different stuff that I had to deal with. I've been a homeowner since two thousand and six. For the four years of my mother's death, I had to go through a whole lot of different wrongdoing to me.
Let, let me ask you a question, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
What's your intention?
My intention, my intention was where I was happy. That my family allowed me to have a will, to go through a state, and I didn't think I had to go through paying. Repentable attorneys to try to take everything away from me. But I worked part-time, two jobs, thirteen hours, because out of love, it was left for me. As an inheritance of air, of a property. And I'm not giving up. I'm gonna have where that's gonna be done, work on the property, I had to deal with, dealing with the property of. Four lots, I came in court. I had to deal with where the lot was through a tax sale that has never been to where taxes was behind.
Well.
But it came up to that, money from that was stolen out of.
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me.
Hmm.
I'm the councilman, the, the lady, Ms. Smith, she's gonna give you my card, I walk my dog past there, I know, I know the people. Uh, the family members, right? So, what we're gonna do is she's gonna give you my card. And we're gonna actually work with you and see what we can do with this, and Mr. Pleasure is gonna actually, um.
I have all legal documents where I went through secessions and everything, okay.
I make a re- make a recommendation that we continue this on behalf of Mr. Harding to the next, um. Council, our next condemnation hearing.
Thank you.
Motion by, uh, Mr., um, uh, Pleasure, second by, uh, Mr. Wazan that we. Uh, continue, um, until the next condemnation hearing, uh, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty six. Uh, and before then, uh, perhaps tomorrow, you can give me a call, uh, she's gonna give you my card. Members, watch your machine, I'm sorry. Motion pass eight zero. Um, one twenty Columbus Street, Homer, Louisiana.
An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty five indicated this structure. Um, is currently occupied with utilities connected, um, this property will be handled through our property maintenance. It's recommended that this file be closed.
Concur. Uh, motion by, uh, Mr., uh. Mr. Hamner is second by Mr. Uh, Wazan, uh, that we concur with administration? Members, watch your machine? Motion pass.
I must say, bad paying job, though.
Eighty nine oh one, uh, Main Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, an inspection conducted on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Mr. Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, that we concur with administration, uh, members, watch your machine? Motion pass eight zero. Two thirty seven Peter Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on July tenth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on July eleventh, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to concur with administration.
Motion by, uh, Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Wazan, uh, that we con- concur with administration, members, watch your machine? Motion pass seven zero, two zero seven Chauvin Street, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on June twenty first, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to concur with administration.
A motion, uh, by, uh, Ms. Chauvin, second by Mr. Hammer to concur with administration, any more discussion, members, watch your machine? Motion pass eight zero, one oh three, uh, Ashton Drive, uh, Homer, Louisiana.
It's our recommendation that this structure be continued to the July, I'm, I'm sorry, until the January. Twenty seven, twenty twenty six condemnation hearing, so that the legal proceedings may be completed and the trailer removed.
Motion by Mr. Babbin, second by Ms. Chauvin, that we concur with administration, any more discussion, members, watch your machine? Motion pass eight zero, forty seven eighty four North Body Black Drive, Gibson, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. An inspection conducted on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on October twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure, uh, be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by November twenty eighth. Twenty twenty five.
Um, state your name, address and, uh.
Good evening.
Your intention.
My name is Wilbert Johnson. Residing at six two three one Body Black Drive, Gibson. I'm here on behalf of J Media, Seneca Corporation. That owns this property. And if the council will allow. We would like to rebuild, re- and bring it back up to code.
The amount of time it'd take to do that, sir?
Well, as much time as you will allow us to. And then if we need more. I would have to ask for an extension.
Have you any idea how much time it would take, or who's the company, what's the name of the company?
J Media.
J Media, okay.
Yes. And, uh. It's gonna take a little time. I just got disposition at a short notice a few days ago, so. I have looked at the property.
Uh, have you?
Uh, have you, well, um, I think, um. What we're gonna have to do, sir, I'm gonna give you my number. Cuz I actually passed. And those who are left, uh, I see only one person that might be out there. Generally, what happens is that, yeah. If you can contact us, we can actually have some type of conversation. Right now, uh, sir, uh, the position that, um, I would entertain a motion by one of my colleagues. Is to concur with administration, which is giving you, uh, thirty days, uh, basically till, what, November twenty-eight? Uh, till November twenty-eight. Depending on the conversation that we have, sir, uh, then we can actually see what we can actually do to help you. But, uh, right now, uh, we can't really go on what you're saying right now, just to, just to say, we don't have no idea what you're gonna do. So we're gonna concur with the administration, then see what we can do to, to, to help you out. So right now, the chair would entertain, uh, uh. Yeah, uh, uh, motion by Mister Amadi, second by Ms. Chauvin, uh, to concur with administration. Any more discussion? Members, watch your machine. Motion pass eight zero. Six oh one, Maria Street, Chauvin, Louisiana.
The init- The initial complaint was received on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that the residential and accessory structure be condemned and the owner order to demolish or remove the structure. By November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to concur with administration.
Motion by Ms. Chauvin, second by Mister Hammer, to concur with the administration. Uh, any more discussion, members, watch your machine? Motion pass seven zero, uh, eleven fourteen, Dashville Street, Homer, Louisiana.
The initial complaint was received on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner order to remove or demolish the structure by November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Name and address, sir?
My name is Daniel Turner. Uh, after I received a letter from the planning commission, I did all the necessary repairs and I repainted the house. S- since then, uh, I did everything that was all repairs that's necessary and I repainted the house. You can send somebody out, they can verify everything I'm saying. Everything that was needed to be done, I did it and I repainted it.
Okay, Mister Turner, I'm looking at pictures here from eight days ago, October, um, twentieth. Um. Were your repairs done prior to that or it's been done?
I did a few days ago, all the repairs were done.
So all the repairs, this, these pictures aren't representative of what it looks like?
Well, I wonder, most of the repairs were on one side of the house, but I repainted the house. Repair house on one side, I did every, all the repairs that was necessary.
Okay, um, so what I'll do is, if you feel confident and you've, that you've, uh. That you've done all the repairs, what I'll do is, uh, follow a recommendation of the administration. However, I'm gonna ask them to do a reassessment of it to verify that he did complete all the repairs. If not, then we just move forward with, uh, with the.
And I repaired it, and someone is living there.
Okay, yeah. Oh, okay, that, that poses a different ballgame there. So, with that being said. Let them do their due diligence, since you said that you did all the repairs, necessary repairs, what have you. And then we'll, uh, we'll revisit it, you know, at that time. I can easily, um, they'll let me know. Condition of the, uh, property. No problem?
I say, thank you.
No problem, have a good.
Y'all served on this committee for a couple of years when I was with the fire department many years ago.
Got you, got you. We're gonna move forward, but we'll, we'll be talking to you, Mister Turner. We appreciate it.
A motion by Mister Pleasure, second by Ms. Chauvin, to concur with administration. Any more discussion, members, watch your machine? Hey, that's all right. I had all the candy. Uh, motion pass seven zero. Giffney, three-eight-five, um, Cleveland Street, Homer, Louisiana.
An inspection conducted on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, indicated that this residential mobile home has been demolished. It's our recommendation that this file be closed.
And I make a motion to concur with administration.
Uh, motion by Ms. Chauvin, second by, uh, uh, Mister Hamner, that we concur with administration, uh, members, watch your machine. Eight zero, motion by Ms. Chauvin, second by Mister Hamner, uh, that we adjourn, uh, members, watch your machine. Motion pass eight zero, we are adjourned.